Tonight, we have an update on the CRB well from Jim Morris. And I'll find environmental. Then I want to talk about something with garbage. And then we just passed a resolution for a training course. So without further ado, Jim, I'm going to open the report to you. I asked you to come in and just kind of give us an update. I know that him and Trustee Matthews are working very hard on different approvals and stuff. But I thought it would be helpful for this board to get him in and ask questions.
You're about to get another approval in the mail. The D E C permit is written.
Oh, my God.
And we are waiting for the...
Did you get that out spelt? Hallelujah.
We're waiting for the regional permit administrator to come back and vacation and sign it. So what that will do, there are really three elements to what's going to go on there. One is the pump house and water main, which is all approved. And second is what we call a water taking permit, a water supply application, which is now... Permit is written and will be issued shortly. Still, we'll do that soon. So I'll talk about that permit first. Basically, what the D E C did here is, you know, we filed application for the two wells out here at Crystal Run Village. Together pumping 850,000 roughly, like it's 868,000 gallons of water a day. They were ready to issue that a year and a half ago. And then what they wanted to do was wrap in our reservoirs, Prospect and Green Hill, because we were over... And they're doing this, you know, you define this with everything. When the economy goes down, the D E C, their enforcement and fines go up and all that. So we were taking more water from the reservoirs on a daily basis and had been since the 80s that they were permitted for. So that went around a long time. And Art was at one of the meetings at D E C with Pippen and myself. And after a lot of, you know, watershed analysis, we have less than a square mile of watershed for each of these reservoirs individually. Whereas the watershed that serves the wells is about 11 square miles. So you have a lot more potential to extract water there than there. But we convinced the D E C that, you know, the Crystal Run water is, I call it, more expensive water after pumping than when it comes into the village by gravity. The infrastructure isn't there operating and so forth. So the permit that you're going to receive increases the permitted taking from Prospect and Green Hill together from, essentially, almost doubles it. 740 or 750,000 now. It's going to up it to a million three.
From what current size it was.
Right. So when you're flush with water, they wanted it balanced. So you took an equal amount from both sides at all times. Honestly, that's a waste of money. Why pump from Crystal Run if you're... A year like this, it's been wet and you have much cheaper water from the reservoirs. So that's what we've been going around with them for, actually, a year. And they finally saw it our way after, you know, multiple go-arounds of responses to their comments. So that's the permit.
Wait, wait, before you go on, before you go on, let me just say that that is no small thing. We had been taking from the reservoir to service this village for decades. And suddenly, they came up with a concept that we were taking where there was what was permitted 40 years ago. And so we now had to deal with yet another new issue. And it was no easy convince to say, okay, we've been taking from here for all this time. Obviously, it can support this time in a wet year. We don't need to go to taking from CRB unless we are, you know, in need. And it took a lot to get them to acquiesce to that. Now, go on. I'm here with you. Give this a five.
That's, you know, that's it.
Because it took a lot of work.
Yeah, but that's really it. You're now, you can really optimize your water resources. Take it from the reservoirs when it's available. Use Crystal Run when you have to. You're now, you know, your average daily use in... In the summer, it goes over a million. Still, in most of the nine months of the year, it's under a million. You know, you now have permitted sources totally 2.1 million.
Hallelujah.
So you've got lots of water to spare for the first time in 100 years.
Does that 2.1 factor in?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So that's where that stands. We've got nothing more to do on that. Once the permit...
I'm sorry, just to be clear. So after these are online 100%, the village will be able to produce 2 million gallons a day?
Well, no, you have the balance. You have that much permitted sources. You still, I think, their maximum taking that they'll allow you to use in a day. You can't sell water outside the district. Permit's going to be so structured. So you have to go back and modify the permit.
Because to simplify it, the deal is that if the water is in the reservoir, which is a million, just to give it a round number, a million a day, you use that. If you are running lower, then you go to the CRB well. You can't combine the two because if you're going to the CRB wells, you are less than flush in the reservoir. So you cannot combine the two and say, that's what we can produce. One is a backup for the other.
You could take, you could take a million three on an, you know, average over the whole year. You take a million three. That's way more than you ever use. And if your usage goes up, that's still, you can still, as long as it's within the district, you can still take up to the whole, you know, if it goes to a million four, a million five, that's not an issue. As long as you're taking it from the sources that are permitted.
One has to keep in mind that before the CRB wells were developed, what we had was simply the reservoir. And we had that for 100 years. And so when we ran dry, we had to hook up to Florida because there was no other source. Now, with the development of the CRB wells, what we have is not running out to provide for those we have here. That's what it provides. If we're running low with the reservoir, thank God, we now have the CRB wells. And that's what we're going to be permitted to take so that we will be able to service our people in time of drought or not. We have the backup. It is not a combination of the two to reach 2 million. It is making sure that you have the 1 million plus that's necessary.
All right, but let's go back to the question.
Yeah.
In essence, we would be able to produce 2 million gallons of water a day.
They won't let you take that.
No, but I'm saying that's what we, basically, we have available. We can only take 1.3.
But before this, your permit was, for well number one, was, you know, 340-some-thousand a day, plus the Prospect and Green Hill together were in 700 range. So your total was only a million before. Now it's over 2 million.
But I need to be very clear on this, that the need to take is the kickoff. The need to take is the kickoff. We are not entitled to take 2 million.
No, I'm just curious about how much...
I just need that on the record.
I mean, we're not stupid. We understood that personally.
No, I understand. It's just that I want everybody to be clear.
And I also expect that there will be permit conditions. If you have, and if there are any that are onerous, you have 30 days to file a formal, you know, objection after the permit is issued. But they want a balance to protect, you know, the limited fisheries resources and everything else and other downgrade, you know, Arcadia's water source comes from the Green Hill watershed, let's call it. So the permit is going to come with a balancing of the sources so that you're never going to pump Prospect down to minus 120, okay? The wells are going to have to come on long before that.
Sure. And I understand the mathematical, I don't know, you just went over. I understand all that. But just to be clear, the D E C has said they're never going to allow us to sell water to outside user?
That's, that was a...
Or was that a determination that the village made?
No, that was a D E C permit condition in the last permit, even for the first well. That is kind of a standard condition that they put in permits, you know, to limit...
When was that permit?
Oh, '07.
Okay.
And that was the reason I wanted to be clear. This isn't a question of what one wants or what doesn't want. This is a question of, we can produce so much in a good flush here at the reservoir and as backup, we have these wells. We are not allowed to use that until this is in trouble, until this is in trouble. So you can't look upon it as being able to produce 2 million. Stop me. If the D E C is saying, if times are such that your reservoir is going down, then you can call on these wells. But you cannot. They are your backup.
I understand.
But if that's an issue that needs clarification, we have that time period to talk to the D E C about that.
30 days.
I asked about it and, you know, and I understand what they were saying. But right now, the village is in a position where we're paying higher sewer rates than we would like to because the village alone is covering the cost of a brand new sewage treatment plant. So this just kind of scares me now that we can't sell you our excess water if we, you know, that we don't have the...
It's not excess. And that's why I'm trying to be very clear about it. It's not excess and it's not just in my eyes. It is in the D E C's eyes. This is not excess. The CRB wells were developed in order to provide us with a water source. If you can look at, and I'm sure you're totally aware, all of you, of the time that we went through that drought from hell, there was a question of there being no water. And the CRB was. And we were literally down to no water.
I understand.
That this is, these are allowed to be developed in order to give us that backup that is necessary to service the people we already have. This is not additional.
You know, order of magnitude, the D E C would be unlikely to modify the permit to allow you to sell, I'll throw a number out there, 400,000 gallons a day to some major... Say someone wanted to do an industrial facility of some kind in the town, okay? Not likely. If you wanted to go outside the village, say, to provide water in the town to some homeowner, say, you know, the situation out near the Tampa Rock where you have homeowners that are impacted.
Right.
Oh, yeah. The D E C approved that in flash. So it's really an order of magnitude question, you know? 10,000, 20,000, you know, very doable. Half a million gallons a day to some private entity.
Not going to happen.
Not going to happen.
But so we can sell to outside users, though?
They have not said so. They have not said so. You'd have to modify your permit.
And you'd have to identify to them who and the scale, okay?
I would urge us to get this approved before we...
I understand.
They're working on this for so many years that I would urge us to get this approved to service our existing patrons.
Let's understanding what our limitations are before we spend any more money on it.
And honestly, some of this comes from the village way back because in the '03, '04, '05 timeframe, when the first permit was being written, you know, what the village didn't want to do, we made sure that it was for transmitting raw water only to these couple water districts that are in the town that are along the route. You know, the village patently at that time did not want to get into business of taking on those water districts. So that, part of the history is also from the village. So that's that. You know, as soon as, you know, the permit will probably come here with a copy to me, probably a copy to Art and Pippen. So as soon as we get that, we should all read it and see...
Hallelujah.
Is there any...
A long way, a long way.
Conditions that are unbearable. Let's put that one. So that's that. And then the, you know, I think the... The other aspect of what we had been working on are the pump house and the transmission main. The pump house is all approved by State Health, so that's done. You can really build that at any time. But the lynchpin in the whole water main, as you know, from, from the bridge over the Walkehill River, which is right here, all the way into the village, we buried that water main during the emergence, or after the emergency. We buried the portion in the village during the emergency. And then I want to say that contract was from '07 into '08. Metro Industries, that's about 2.3 miles to 1,600,006 to bury that water line. The portion at the bridge, essentially, here's the site, okay? Comes, here's the wellhouse, the line comes down, goes on to La Baron. So then comes through our easement on La Baron, this is what was originally approved by the Health Department, to a valve here with a, let's see, provision for an emergency pipe into the town of Walkehill. Walkehill Water Plant is right here. If they ever had an emergency situation where, you know, they were in trouble and you were flush, you could provide them with water. So...
Which was part of the original deal.
Right. So from here, this valve box right here, all the way back to the village, that's already underground buried. What happened with the bridge is kind of a long story and I'll condense it. But in the '02, '03 drought, the county, you know, reviewed our plans to, you know, get the emergency pipe across. They, our structural guy, Charlie Brown, did his work on designing bridge hangers that would work on the existing bridge. As it turned out, the bridge structure wasn't adequate to, it was already in such a state it became, we couldn't use those. So we strapped a pipe to the bridge. The initial take on the bridge that the county was going to design at that time, we would have still been able to use the hangers and put the pipe under the bridge, okay? And then insulated its sleeve. And just so you know, the bridge goes from here to here, but the river is only half of that span. The balance of it is just very flat flood plain. So really, this is dry land, most of the step one Walkehill was, and the fact comes up there. It would only really be on half of the bridge, the half that's over the river. So I want to say in the '05 timeframe, the county moved away from designing the bridge themselves, decided to go with a contractor, and also decided that they would prefer that we not hang our pipe on their bridge because it would be more than preferable.
You said you will not hang it on.
So the head bridge guy, Ron Meyer, from Orange County, that we met and see it myself, out on the site, right there, and he said, what we want you to do is, you know, stay in our right of way, but do a directional bore under the river where you essentially drill, have a drill rig that drills diagonally under the river and then pops up on the other side. And you pull a sleeve back that you can put the pipe through.
In their right of way.
Right, within their right of way. So, you know, we brought Clough Harbor in to work on that. They did that design. It was incorporated by Ross from EP, the civil engineer for the water line. And that was then subsequently all approved by State Health. So then...
We did everything we were supposed to.
Right. We have that approval in hand. Then a year and a half ago, the county came back to us and said, you know, now we've let the contract for a bridge design, but we're going to have a bridge designed that won't allow you to be on the downstream side. You have to move either, you have to move to the upstream side. So that gave me a major migraine because basically it was the county that directed us to be on the downstream side. And I know, you know, because I do a lot of new racing and I paddle the river a lot, there's a bridge of bedrock right upstream here that I was worried about we might not be able to get through with our directional bore. So we've been working with the county for a year and more. And this is their map now, what they're going to do for a new bridge. And, let me grab my hands off my...
They're going to build this bridge before I die?
No, I don't know. I don't know.
This bridge is supposed to be up in '02. But it all boils down to the money. When they can get the federal money, the bridge is going to be built. So anyway, this is our, this dash line that you see here is our district design, okay? There are some issues with that because the new, this is the existing bridge abutment, these wing-shaped abutments that you see. On this side, the newer abutment is going to be straight, so for whatever reason. It's being designed by W S P cells, one of the biggest transportation engineering companies in the country. So the county is going to actually have to either condemn or purchase new real estate right there in order to be able to build this bridge. That's a little problem for us because if we do a directional bore from here, say we extend our water main to there, okay? We can't get past that wing wall and into their real estate on a straight line because this right here is owned by others. So we met with the county the last time, it was about a month ago or so, and they had another plan, which was for us to directional bore from here before the bridge is built and dead-end it right up here against the head wall of the existing bridge.
And wait.
And that's a very steep bank. So before they begin construction and demolish this bridge, we would dead-end the pipe. Then after they obtain this real estate, we would then come up outside their limits of construction and around and tie back into the, that's actually your water valve right there, okay? So we had to do a couple of things to see if that was feasible. First of all, we got the county map and the TOPO was all wrong. They had TOPO lines coming out into the river for no reason. And it took us, you know, a couple of weeks to sort that out. What we've done now, we just actually finished that on Friday, is we are sending the repaired map with what the county wants to see back to Clough Harbor with the borings. The county, actually, their contractor did borings along both sides of the riverbank to check on the feasibility of building this new bridge. So right now, that is being shipped up to Clough Harbor to see if a directional bore in the, along the lines of what the county is thinking is feasible. And if they say it's feasible, we're going to all come back to you and say, we want, you know, we want you to have us draw all those plans, do the environmental, and get it re-approved by the Health Department that way. And you're going to have to... I think the bridge design is far enough along now that, it's the first time they've actually moved the design through to a final design. So I don't see them backing away from that. There might be timing issues on when it gets built, but if your pipe is in the ground and under the river, you might have to wait a little longer. But they did agree, also, you should note, they're going to build a temporary bridge over here, okay? And then demolish everything there. So they have agreed that, you know, our pipe can stay here until this bridge goes up, then we can move our pipe, you know, because if this construction takes more than a season, you don't want to be without your emergency water source if you need it. So they're going to design that temporary bridge to accommodate our pipe. And so if we have to, we'll move it over there and then...
Hang it.
Right. And then when their bridge is all built, come in, this real estate has been obtained, come in and hook up like that.
And I would like to commend Jim's patience because I have to tell you that it sounds like it happened in two weeks, but in fact, it took three years.
But, you know, that's where we are really now. We're, now that we have the map straightened out, it's not, we're not doing anything. We're going to wait till here from Clough Harbor and then go back to you.
It sounds like if it's not your doing, there's a lot of it's there.
Yeah, I mean, you know, who, you can't make this stuff up, you know?
No, they keep changing.
We buy the hangers.
That's how you're doing. They just keep changing on you, so there's a lot of it's...
However, I have to say that I went directly to Diana on two occasions. And in both those instances, for whatever reason, maybe just because you bang heads together and everybody was in the same room, and pointed out the fact that we have been put through this ringer on several occasions, that we've had a far more cooperative attitude.
You know, we pointed out that the bridge hangers that we bought in '03 are still sitting down like...
Are sitting there. So we, we're all ready to hang them off your pretend bridge while you, when you demolish this one. You know, it was certainly directed to do so by the county on a couple of the stations. And they point, of course, that for small villages, they have to go through this kind of expense in order to accommodate the change in design three different times.
So, you know, once we hear something from Clough, we'll get it right to Art and Pippen and you and see where we go from there.
I think that's the kind of county farm we're...
Where do you think we might be going? I mean, once we can actually, the piping is permanently in place, what about treatment?
Well, you know, there's a treatment. The original plan was to do green sand filtration on the triangle across from high school, okay? And Pippen, Gandhi designed that plant. It was reviewed by State Health. They gave comments back. At that time, the village board decided to suspend any work on that. So really, you know, I think, yeah, we're more in the water supply aspect, but I certainly think there are some things you want to look at. You know, your, your water plant, you know, has a certain lifespan to it. And, you know, you may want to look at just when you need to build a new one, pumping all of that water up to...
It comes down to, you know, a decision primarily between two directions. One, to build a plant to treat there, or since we already have to upgrade our plant, that we pipe it over to there and upgrade and treat the water from there as well.
Right.
Which is something that I've always thought was the most intelligent. So we're, we're moving up to the concept of having to approach that issue now, now that we have to deal with all of this.
And, you know, the water, when we were using the well in the emergency, the water got a bad rap because its quality has iron and manganese, okay? We experimented with different methods to treat for that. Really, the best method is the green sand filtration. And, you know, as an example, Walkehill treats, I don't know, 3, 4 million gallons of that of this same water. That's exactly what they're called.
It is the same water.
So, you know, it's a high-quality source. It's just different than the source you have. And, you know, whether you, you know, build at some point in the future a new treatment plant that will handle it all better, or you build a little plant out here across from the school bus garage, you know, that's a feasibility study at that time. But, you know, I think just from an operational point of view, you want to get over this hump of getting this done, your pump house done, steward in the woods, all those things before you move on to the next step.
Because that is getting it approved as our emergency source. And then you move on to what you want to do for the future.
When the, the planning for that, you know, should we probably start sooner than later, right?
Well, it's never too soon to start thinking about it. I mean, the, some of the good news is, and Pippen was working on, you know, experimenting with sequestering agents to treat this iron and manganese. You either filter it out in the green sand filter or precipitate it out, or you can lock it up chemically through a sequestration process. And there are different, you know, phosphate-based chemicals that'll do that. And the good news is, you know, there are new ones coming out all the time. So to, you wouldn't necessarily want to make a decision today if a better chemical came out next year. So you really want to take it one step at a time. I think with the flushing, the sequestering and the flushing regimen that might work out, you know, basically, some sediment would get caught in the line. But if you run the well for five or six days and then flush it, you get another five or six days of clean, you know, beautiful water. So that's a way you can manage it short of, you know, investing all the money in that treatment plant across from the bus garage because, you know, again, it's a second facility. There's more maintenance. There's more staffing. There's more cost, everything. And if you just did a booster pump station, you know, that's automated, you know, online, can be remotely controlled from the water plant. You have a lot less staffing and things to deal with, so...
And you're only at this point tying on it in the emergency service.
Right. You can't use this on an everyday basis till the final pump house is built and all the mains buried.
Will they let us for every usage as an emergency source? Do they have to leave a pump house and a new treatment line?
They would start to give you problems with that all the time.
We have to build the, we have to build, no, we have to build the pump house. We have to be able to treat and the pump house, which we already have covered.
Get them to sing about a half million for the pump houses that...
Yeah, I mean, the, the sequestering is one form of treatment and the green sand filter is the other. Sequestering is relatively inexpensive.
That's what we do now.
That would be what we do now.
And that's, that's sequestering has been approved. Yeah, and that's been approved by the Health Department.
Right.
And it's part of the pump house design to have that sequestering done at the pump house. So once that's in place, I think it's no longer an emergency's well source. It's a, it's a source of water. Sequestering is an acceptable means of treatment. It's not the preferred means, but it's, it's one that probably makes the most sense because we're not using the water on a regular basis. Again, it's being used on an emergency purpose, but I think we're, we're kind of, you know, calling it different names for different times. It will be, I think, ultimately, an acceptable source of water for any purpose. It doesn't have to be an emergency.
Right.
They probably would like us to use it more often than not to supplement the reservoirs, to kick it on and use it and use the reservoirs less. But when we do that, it costs us money. And that's why the sequestering is probably the better way to go at this point in time because it's a relatively inexpensive way to treat the water. But at some point, we're going to have to take a look at what makes the most sense long-term. But this would get us past this, the, you know, running around trying to figure out where our water's coming from. We will have a source of water that's approved in terms of volume, that's approved in terms of treatment, and we'll be there basically at the foot of the switch to get the water into the system. And we don't have to go to the Health Department to get approval as we do now.
Absolutely. But you will have to, you will have to build the pump house and bury the line.
That way now.
And it probably, you know, say, if there's a hiccup in the... And it probably, you know, say if there's a hiccup in the bridge issue, I think if you had your pump house built and the line was buried up to here, and you were still monkeying around on the, on the emergency bridge crossing, I, I think they'd still allow, allow you to use it on a daily basis because you're only talking to a few hundred feet.
And, and in my opinion, and it's only my opinion, you gentlemen certainly made the comment, when we're talking about long-term, we're not talking about next week or next year, we're talking about long-term decisions that have to be made. We're talking about making plans for ten and twenty years down the line in the village. We're not talking about a year from now. A year from now, we have, as Jim just said, even if there is a hiccup with this and we get held up even longer by the county with this, we're going to be made whole. But when we're talking about the long-term, what does the village of Ocean have to do with water supply, we're not talking about a year from now, we're talking about a decade from now.
Right.
Not saying that we shouldn't face into it, I'm simply saying it's not tomorrow.
And, you know, for a hundred years-
We gotta afford it tomorrow.
Right.
Well, not only can we afford it, but it's not necessary tomorrow.
Right. And for a hundred years, it was, what are we gonna do for what?
It was.
That's over. Now, how are we gonna treat it starts to become a question that's a little easier to deal with, you know? The hair pulling and the getting cut off by Florida and all those things, you, you pass that now.
Oh, absolutely. This is absolutely a good thing and I appreciate both your hard work on this. Um, I just wanna make sure that we're doing everything, you know, to make sure that we don't get into another situation if we have the sewer plant, we're, you know, we have passes that we wanna get rid of and money to use, but, you know, it's something about the cost, so.
And, well, and I hope it's very clear to everyone because this really has been such a long haul.
Question. You had made a mention that there's a valve that was there for, for Walk Hill-
Mm-hmm.
For a damage case of emergency.
Right.
And they have a water treatment plant there, Walk Hill, right?
Right.
And so what would be the feasibility of approaching them and running a pipe from there, since the valve's already heading in that direction, where it kills two birds and one stone, they have access to the water, it's already piped in there without an emergency laying pipe, and then if we would need it, they could treat the water and send it to us.
In fact, I had that conversation with Eddie Smith, who I went to high school with, was the head of the Walk Hill Treatment Plant. And, uh, we brought up the issue. Walk Hill was not in favor of getting involved on that level, they wanted to make sure, and, and asked if the DEC wanted to make sure, that because it is very close to the same feeding of water, that we would, in case of emergency, if we were still flushed, would not, I wouldn't rely on that happening is the best way for me to say it since it's not far away.
Right.
Uh, but they weren't interested at the time, it's certainly something we could have-
We could reopen that door. I mean, as of tomorrow, they're gonna have a new supervisor elected.
Exactly. I know.
And I mean, even if it's something that, uh, I, I mean, because, I mean, their benefit is, is one, if they have the pipe already ran there-
Yeah.
So that if they need the water, they can access it.
Right.
For whatever could happen, their, their aspects of it, so it's a safe backup for them. But also, uh, what it's something, as we've discussed, we're not gonna use it every day or it's not gonna be a, uh, I think it's use it as a backup source for water when the reservoirs are, are, you know, when they-
The original, you, you're wise. The original deal was so that there was cooperation from Walk Hill and there was no objection from how we're developing the wells there, was that in case of emergency-
Right.
Uh, something happened to theirs and they, the pipe, major pipe broke and they were in trouble.
Well, also, you know, a couple of things here, their, their first impression when we first developed this well, wells, was, hey, you're putting your straw in our drink.
Right.
The wells, our, your wells are in the town of Walk Hill. And, you know, we demonstrated hydrogeologically that they're not connected and it was, you know, it's a whole different system. But they were, you know, they gave a subdivision and site plan approval in one night, they waived the public hearing and all those things.
They were very cooperative.
They're very workable on getting the compounds approved and all that. Um, and part of the bone that we threw them was the emergency. But at the time, um, they, their water treatment capacity was operating very close to the red line. But they've since then built a new water plant. And I don't know, you know, I could, I could talk to Lou and Grouse, he was the superintendent now, about whether that scenario could work now, because now they have other treatment, more treatment capacity elsewhere in the system. So I, you know-
At the time, it wasn't workable, it, it's a wise idea to re-approach.
It's just something to look at.
Sure.
And even if it had to be some kind of an agreement where it's potentially a lease agreement type thing where, I mean, we have to pay, if we use it, we have to pay X, Y, and Z or something like that.
Sure.
It's probably in the long run, a lot less expensive than building a place and-
Right.
And doing all of that and adding employees and yada, yada, yada.
So we just, quite honestly, until this, it took up this permit and is now being written, it wasn't, you know, we weren't ready to make the next step. I can't, you know, when, when this comes through, I buy drinks for the board.
I don't drink, so we can-
Uh-huh.
I can dig into that.
Okay, there was a form of, I owe seven apples.
I think it's just something to look at, I mean, to me.
Well, I know that in the last county, um, water report they put out, they encouraged sharing version of Walk Hill.
Right, right.
So.
And, and so you know, your aquifer's enough better than theirs because during the drought, uh, that was the worst since sixty-five, we were in constant contact with Eddie Smith and our wells and theirs are about the same depth, but they had to closely monitor their wells for drawdown because they were in danger of burning out their pumps. They were drawing the aquifer down forty feet and we were pumping the full-
And I stayed flushed.
For five months and we only pumped down fourteen feet. So ours is, you know-
It's a good well.
Superior in terms of how much water the aquifer will transmit, except for your aggregate in the end.
Ali, what a gift, thanks for that, Jim.
So, so when we hear back, we get the permit, we'll report back, we hear from Clough on the feasibility, we'll report back. I'll talk to Lou and Grouse about that, the concept of treatment and-
Good.
Is there, are there any questions?
No, please.
Jim, thank you very much, you're very informative and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right.
I was excited to go, I was really excited to talk to him and talk to him.
I think you might get past that.
I know, I know.
You have guys wanting to-
Okay, I know.
Thanks. All right, so next thing I wanted to talk about tonight, I, I mentioned it a few weeks back, uh, doing the budget stuff, uh, crunching numbers, it's very clear that we need to find ways to cut costs before a budget season. Um, I talked a few weeks ago about actually privatizing the garbage pickup, putting it or putting it out to bid. Um, I did some research, uh, we pay roughly three hundred thousand every year for garbage pickup, um, which isn't a bad number compared to others. The town of Chester put their garbage pickup out to bid and they're paying, thank you, they're paying seventeen dollars a household per month. So if we round our number up and say there's two thousand homes in the village, under that rate, they got, we'd be paying four hundred thousand a year, which is more than we're paying now. Um, the question that was raised though is-
Oh, sorry.
If we put out to bid, can we potentially get a better rate because the village is a lot more compact, it would take less, a higher cost of gas to get all everything picked up. Um, so I wanted to bring to the board the concept and something we can talk about tonight, we don't have to decide tonight, but whether we wanna put it out to bid, see what kinda numbers we get back in and then make a determination after that. Because for example, if we put it out to bid, the low bid was seventeen dollars a ton, like Chester got, then it wouldn't cost effectively because it's more what we're paying now. But if we put it out to bid and maybe the low one was thirteen a ton, for example, which, you know, would work out to some number of way less than we're paying, then we could continue out of the conversation.
How do we calculate what we're paying now?
Uh, it's laid out into the budget. We have, um, our tipping fees annually and we have, uh, salary benefits to employees, repair and maintenance to the garbage truck and, uh, fuel costs. So it's just adding those line items together.
And that includes the arrangement we have with school, then we have to factor-
Yeah.
That if they buy, basically buy us a new garbage truck.
Right.
Yeah, that would include that, yeah, yeah.
Well, we're getting, in the last fiscal year, we authorized the purchase of a garbage truck and I think they're building that for us right now. So we'll have a new one soon and basically what Mike says, if we were to go a privatization route, we would keep the garbage truck for things like, you know, whether it's, uh, junk weed or, you know-
Well, like now, but-
Exactly.
They've been using it for the storms.
Right, so we can sell the use for it, you know, we have to, so we can sell one off and keep the newest one.
Yeah, but my, but my question is that, that the, when we're doing the analysis, that we make sure that we factor in that-
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Or garbage truck, that that doesn't come out of the-
And also, well, we definitely have it because they've been good to us, we've been in a relationship.
Yeah.
So, but I just figured I'd bring to the board and see what our thoughts were, if we wanted to put it out there, should the numbers come in or if it's something we're not ready for yet?
Now, I just gotta get this straight in my mind, I think. Now, when we collect recyclables, we get compensated for that, correct?
There is a company that does that and we're working on the documents to put that out to bid. Right now, our single stream recycling goes to the county at zero cost. Okay. There's a company that could pay, but we need to go through the bidding process. David's putting the other documents right now for that.
Right. But right now, we, we're picking, I think what Pete's getting to is, we're picking it up.
Yes.
What's gonna happen then, who's gonna pick it up?
We, that would be our decision. We could say, we'll still do the recycling, we'll bring it in and we'll try to turn a profit on it, or we could factor that into the bid and say, we also want a single stream recycling and I do it at all costs.
And add it up with the benefits.
Right. We can also decide when we put it out to bid, we want a price for two days a week and we want a price for one day, we can see what the difference is between the two. I like to keep it in two days, that's what we're accustomed to, but we could look at the numbers and see what comes back.
Sure.
So, I think it's pretty good, nothing's gonna, not gonna hurt to get out of this.
I mean, we, you know, we should definitely, I mean, see what somebody has to offer. I think that, kind of, uh, I think that we could cost save in a lot of ways with the current service that we have. For one, I guess if it comes down to it to going one, one day a week pickup, two, uh, we can encourage for, in a number of ways, we can encourage and/or induce more recycling that doesn't cost us any money to get rid of the refugees.
To limit the stream.
I mean, 'cause you think about it, I mean, there's roughly two thousand village residents, right?
Four thousand homes.
Or four thousand, rather, if you say. So if you, uh, at, I'd say sixty or eighty bucks maybe per, per home, you're talking, I think people change. But if you provided people with big recyclable container, that says village of Ocean, it's owned basically by the village, you, you as the homeowner, put out your recyclables in and, you know, it's, it's not only talked up, but enforced, you're, you're, you're gonna eliminate a lot of, you're gonna save, if it's three hundred thousand dollars that we're paying now, which most of which is the tipping fee, you could probably reduce that by fifty, sixty thousand dollars in a year.
Sure.
And in two years, you pay for the containers, which are permanent, and you, you're, you're also, uh, you know, continually save over the long run, over the years.
Much of the tech enforcement.
Yeah, but yeah, I mean, it takes enforcement and it takes a resolution and it takes a hundred dollar fine or two hundred dollar fine, fifty, uh, seventy five dollar fine, you don't do it.
Well, there's, uh, there's different mechanisms, absolutely, I agree. I think at the end of this fiscal year, we're gonna see our tipping fees are, hopefully feel probably less than we budgeted on because of the uptick in single stream recycling.
Right.
And the budget you talked about and all that. Um, we could also, if we wanted to go that route, purchase garbage casters that are a certain size, get one per household and say, that's all we're gonna pick up, you know, every week. Because right now, we essentially pick up whatever's in the store, we, we help that, we take care of it. But if we were to sanitize it and say, or eliminate, you know, instead of us buying it, we're only gonna take up to a forty gallon jug twice a week or once a week, then it would behoove that person to say, all right, when we take this stuff out to a bid, put in the recycling and keep the rest.
Well, it, it's just that concept there, you just got, what's gonna happen is, is you go find garbage-
Garbage on the street.
-all, all over the place.
Oh, you're not saying, I'm not saying that's the way to go.
Dumping in the dumpsters at, at businesses downtown and dumping in the village things downtown. I mean, there's, we, we, I think it's something we definitely have to explore, but we could figure a way, I think that there's methods if it's explored, I mean, unless somebody comes up and says, it's like two hundred thousand dollars a year to do it, then it's a no-brainer.
Right.
You could get out of the whole business altogether and don't have to worry about it and you save employee costs and yada, 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 but otherwise, I mean, if we're gonna keep it, there's ways to reduce our costs in it. Especially, like you said, limiting it to once a, a week. And I gotta be honest, I, I recycle every week, but I don't have enough garbage to put out twice a week. Once in a blue moon I would if, if there, and I got, you know, it's five people in the house and I don't have enough garbage to put out twice a week. I mean, it's nice, but to put out two small bags once a week or one on, on Tuesday and one on Thursday, I, I mean, it's really a luxury that, that, and, and I, I'm speaking of a family of five, it's a luxury that, that we really don't need. And, I mean, you know, there are people that have more in their household than me, but, you know, not, not on an average. And it's too much to, I, I don't have enough to put out twice a week.
I think any analysis is always helpful, uh, if, you know, especially this year. And I think beyond that though, I love having the pickup that we have. Uh, it's always just a look at the numbers, more current numbers and see where we are. Uh, I would be hesitant about going in one direction or another till I had those results. So I think finding out the numbers is the healthy thing.
I, I, I agree. I mean, obviously, it's only common sense, it's not gonna hurt us, we'll pick some bids and make a couple of money. I just echo what Pete said, he's made this point before, on one end that he, he suggested we've already done, a little bit of education with people to let them know, look, you know, we have the single stream recycling and that, that's helped, but he's also touched on, you know, at some point, we're gonna be serious about recycling. He's absolutely right about the enforcement part. I'm exactly like him. I don't fill up a kitchen container, you know, garbage bag, I don't fill that up on a Tuesday when I put it out, but I just put that out. I could easily go once a week, but we all know, when you're riding around, you know who's live in our neighborhoods, you know the people in your neighborhood, you know the people, how many people they have in their house? Who have four garbage cans-
Or had a funny.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, on a regular basis, have four garbage cans out on a Tuesday or Thursday, they can't be recycling. And I don't think we have to be officious about it at the beginning, but if we are gonna start to think about recycling, you can't have somebody kind of go around and look at all that knock on the door and say, you know, it is, you know, you're standing toward recycling and, you know, you're not getting it done here.
There was a time in the beginning when the county first started recycling, that we were the most aggressive community in the county and we had a trailer that divided, you couldn't co-mingle at that point, you had to separate. We got the trailer, we went through everything to make sure we, we had the most aggressive program and we really did cut down on the stream. Uh, then the, the selling, the people who were buying, the recyclables, weren't making enough profit, so that closed down. And, uh, Orange County went, uh, flat on, uh, their co-mingling and they just wanted to own, I mean, on the separation and they wanted it co-mingled. I think in our looking, uh, there would be two things I'd be looking for, would be one, to limit the stream and you can't sell that and there are stickers that are made, they use them in other communities where you slap it on the garbage field that says, there are recyclables in here, please make sure that you are recycling in order to try to elevate people's consciousness about the responsibility and because then we do not end, end up paying for it and it ends up allowing them to have better service. Uh, beyond that, I think, uh, I mean, I didn't wanna get into detail, that's why I say get the numbers first and find out the cost of what we're talking about, maybe there are about, maybe there are ways. But I think limiting the amount of garbage you can put out for each, for a pickup is a losing path.
Yes, each row.
It's my, longer law comes to this.
It'll be thrown on the side of the highway.
Yeah, and you're going to find it all over the place.
On, on RC, it's porch.
No, thank you. No, thank you.
And, I mean, again, not to beat a dead horse, but I just think that if we, if it's publicized more, emphasized more, we talked about sending, mailing a card out, and I don't say we mail a card out for this specifically, but.
Right.
The next time we have something that we need to notify the public about.
Yeah.
And that we need to send a card out, we need to add that to the card.
Absolutely.
If there's room available on the card.
Or the mailing.
Reminder that, that, you know, and it's mailing.
Look by arms stiff.
And, um, you know, and, you know, and, and it's, it's a no-brainer. Zero fee as opposed to $80 a ton for your garbage.
Yeah.
And this is your money that's paying for this. It's, it's, it's the community's money, it's your taxes that are paying for it. So, it's a no-brainer. And I think when people get that concept in their mind that, look, you know, I mean, this would be my small part to do to try to help, you know, save things. Because I'm, if I turn my back, my kids will throw stuff in the garbage without me looking and I'm making them dig it out, no, look, get that out of there and put it in the recycling. And, you know, people are more conscientious about it. It, 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 it can save a lot of money.
I think people are far more conscientious now that it's co-mingled anyway. They made their lives so much easier, they didn't have separation in their house, you know, in the kitchen. And I think a lot of people are far, it's more easy and more comfortable with it.
So, am I reading the board right? Do we want to put it out to bid to see what numbers come back in and then do a determination from there?
Talk about it.
It commits us to nothing.
But, I mean.
We can reject this.
Absolutely.
My, my, my point that I, I guess the whole point that I'm saying was is if it's put out to bid, fine, but we still, if it doesn't, we need to go look at alternative aspects of trying to budget it better.
Absolutely.
And, uh, save some money in, in the course of it.
We agree.
Okay. Uh, last, just one quick thing and then I'll open it up if any of the trustees have anything. We have, um, Josh Bell and Manuel Orelena are here, are, could be attending a water conference.
Yep.
And, and the timing is just such that we have to pass this at a work session. Normally, we do this in the public meeting, um, but just to get them, get it authorized on time, we need to do it tonight. Uh, so, just going to read it real quick and I'll ask for a motion. Manuel Orelena and Josh Bell will be attending the New England Interstate Water Pollution Control Commission Fall Training Course, December 9th and 10th in Fisher, New York. The total cost for both employees is $400. Participants must attend both days in order to. They keep, you know, improving their skills. So, I'll ask for a motion. Uh, in a second.
Aye.
All in favor, a single thing I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
Terries. That's all I had. Anyone have anything?
I have one little thing. I have a couple of things. And the one, uh, having disturbed you at the dinner the other night where you were raising, um.
Glaze, yeah.
Funds for the farmers. And I know how many people in this community participated.